Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet, President of the Speedway Town Council. We have a Town Council special meeting agenda set for tonight. It is 6:03. Today is January the 9th. And Bob, will you be running this meeting?
Yeah, sure. I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So, first thing I request is that you call the meeting to order, Mr. President.
I'll call a meeting to order at 6:03.
Thank you. This is a petition 2000, I'm sorry, 2022-DVS-002 with properties located 1805 Gerard Avenue and 5228 Crawfordsville Road. This matter was heard by the Speedway Board of Zoning Appeals, and the variances were granted. The town staff exercised its prerogatives under the BZA rules of procedure, stating that the granting of this petition raised substantial questions related to the zoning for the town, and therefore has appealed that decision to you as the Town Council. It's important to note that only the Town Council can appeal this to the, or I'm sorry, only the town staff can appeal a decision of the BZA to the Town Council. Normally, the appeal procedure is straight to a court through what's known as a petition for writ of certiorari. But under these BZA rules, the town staff and its administrator may appeal a decision of the BZA, but again, only if it raises a substantial question relating to the zoning of the town. The rules generally for the presentation, this is a hearing de novo, which means that the petitioner, the staff, and any remonstrators will present their case to you the same they did to the BZA. So you will, at the conclusion of all the evidence presented, make a vote, you've got ballots in front of you, as to whether or not to grant the petitions or to deny them. In accordance with the BZA rules of procedure, each side will have a total of 20 minutes to make their presentation. So the petitioner will initially have 15 minutes, followed by staff that will make their comments and recommendations. Any remonstrators will also have 15 minutes. And then, at the conclusion, the petitioners and remonstrators will both have five minutes of rebuttal. With that, anybody that is going to be a witness today, please stand and raise your right hand and take a note. Do you and each of you solemnly swear or affirmant of penalties of perjury that your testimony tonight will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And with that, petitioner?
So while they're coming up, Bob, I know that there's two variances here before them, which were approved, considered and approved by the BZA. One is called a variance of use, the other is a variance of development. There's just a slight difference in terminology and meaning, so that's why you have two ballots.
Yes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Gilman. My office address is 211 South Ritter Avenue, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46219. I represent the owners of the subject property located at 1805 Gerard Avenue, second residence at 5228 Crawfordsville Road. Both Dean Ergot and Jim Nichol are with me here this evening, and I then think we have another neighboring property owner that is supportive of this petition as well. We presented the evidence I'm going to share with you tonight to the Board of Zoning Appeals, December 7th, to a vote of four to zero. They voted in full support of our variance request. They did have one condition at the house at 5228, which we will refer to this this evening as the main house. They wanted a little bit more definitive gravel put down to delineate off-street parking, and we agreed to that one condition. So what I'll do is, I do have a series of slides. I don't know if the IT person can hear me. There you go. Thank you, sir. Can you go ahead and just go to the second site? There you go. Thank you. This site literally is just right down the street from where we are tonight. We're up in the top-left corner of this vicinity map. You see, I've darkened the lot at 1805 to the rear of Gerard, 5228 to the frontage of Crawfordsville Road. This is about a 12,000-square-foot lot with two dwellings on it. The minimum standard for this zoning district would be 5,000 square feet per lot. So should this lot stay alone or be subdivided, it clearly would meet the lot area requirements for that district. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is a clear aerial photo of the site. The main house faces Crawfordsville Road, has access from Gerard, excuse me, the second home has access from the alley but fronts Gerard Avenue, as you can see in the overhead. Next slide, please. This is a view from Gerard, as if you were looking east of the property. The slide is on Gerard Avenue of the 1805. We have it established as 1964. It was actually constructed well before that. The reason I use 1964 as a strong placeholder, that's when the city of Speedway had ran, the Water Works Company has utilities servicing this separately from the 5228 site. Believe it or not, the small structure that is located off the alley has always been assessed and recognized as a dwelling. It's actually built on a crawl space, not a slab like a typical garage would be. The main house was built, we have it again, in 1948. Again, those are my dates from when I received information from the Water Works Utility Company. The site, Zone D5, in a D5, referring to the development standards request tonight, the D5 would require a 15-foot rear yard. Your rear yard is opposite your frontage. The frontage on the 1805 Gerard is Gerard Avenue. Even though the house is not facing, the front of the house is not facing Gerard, the backside or the east side is seven feet. A required rear yard in D5 would be 15 feet. So we're asking that the BZA and the Town Council grant us relief from a 15-foot rear yard to a 5-foot rear yard. The other request we would need from a standards variance is this house, when it was constructed, is 543 square feet. Since 1969, when the dwelling district zoning ordinance was codified, a one-story home in D5 was required to be 900 square feet. So we do not meet the minimum floor area for the D5. Those are the two standard variances. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is a survey done in 2016. It gives you a better depiction of what the measurements are in the areas of the home. You see, the one-story dwelling, as it's labeled in the surveyor's report, is 19 feet off the alley, seven feet off the east line, and then it's about 77 feet off the frontage of Gerard. You see the main house facing Crawfordsville Road with the gravel drive, and I think there's a small utility shed. Next. This is, I think they're commonly referred to as yellow cards from the Water Works. This is a bill. It has this bill identified as 1805 Gerard Street. We refer to it today as Gerard Avenue. If you can see where my blue arrow points, the first reading of that service card was 826 of 64 for the dwelling in the rear. Water service connection was established. The reason the last entry on this card is 1986 is that's when they went from the yellow cards, they automated everything, everything became computerized, yellow cards were no longer in use. But thankfully, your utility board or public works board still had this, and they made it available to me. The one thing that the staff did confirm at the utility office is that this is always, 1805 has always maintained a completely separate water and sewer service from the main house at 5228. Next slide. So obviously, I'm giving you a lot of information of how this home, both these homes were established well in advance of the zoning ordinance. I'm giving you information that they've both been serviced separately by your utility companies. Most of the time, that would be considered grandfathered. These units or these homes are grandfathered in. The setbacks would be grandfathered in because they were established prior to any zoning that would regulate them to different standards. You could pursue a legally established nonconforming use certificate through Indianapolis. That's a little bit difficult. Indianapolis no longer has a board member or a staff member that represents Speedway. But the other reason is, this is a Polk Directory. I would have to go literally 53 years and pull documents off their shelves at the state archives, and each documentation is about three pages. You'd want the cover, the actual address, and then the header showing it's on the correct street. And it has to be 53 years of uninterrupted continued use. That's a very daunting task. And what I've, my experience in the past, I've applied for these, I've gotten many of them approved, but the ones run about 90%, 98%, but I may have a break in the chain that I can't tell from a grainy photo, or I can't tell because one of the entries is three Xs and not somebody's actual name. The staff will often say, you know, Gilman, why don't you just go ahead and apply for variance? You've given us overwhelming documentation that makes us feel comfortable that a variance could be supported by the staff or by the board, but it may or may not qualify for the strict terms of a certificate that is absolutely undisputed, without a doubt grandfathered in. That's why we wanted to petition the Board of Zoning Appeals here in Speedway to present all of our evidence to the Board of Competent Jurisdiction and ask them for the grant of the variance, which they did back on December 7th. I did, however, take photographs, and when you take these briefcase-sized Polk directories off the shelf, they do not want you to re-shelve them. And I had about 30. And I really felt bad to take entire 66 of them off the shelf and then tell the staff, hey, you put them back up, I'm done. And it wasn't just because I was being lazy, but I did go every, I checked those years, but I didn't take them off and photograph them like I've done here, but I did do this every five years. So I do have a pretty good confidence level that this is legit. We have that information, but we have it every five years instead of 53 years or whatever for the undisputed chain without any interruptions. Next slide, please. So this is a 1962 aerial, and you could see our corner property, kind of the reason I wanted to share this with you, it does show the existing dwelling in the rear and its present-day location, which means it's almost the same or the exact same distance off the east line as the front house on Crawfordsville. And we're not asking for any changes from 1962 or before. Alls we're asking is to get those houses recognized as two dwellings legally established by a vote of, a support of the BZA vote and support of the Town Council, hopefully, and then we may subdivide the property. There has been concern, you know, about subdividing the property, but again, it's 12,000 square feet, 5,000 square foot for each lot meets the D5. The smaller structure is not changing, won't change, hasn't changed since it was constructed, so there would be no precedent that's being set. And the one good thing about subdividing it is this. When you subdivide a piece of property, you need to go through the plat committee. That's a public hearing process. But most importantly, I've been, I was subdivision administrator at Indianapolis for many years. 911, all the utility companies, fire departments, schools, police, they all get notice of these two lots with the address that's officially assigned by the address technician. They enter that into their system, and everything's on the up and up. It's very accurate. That's how they keep their systems accurate. If there were to be a call to 1805 Gerard, or if there were to be, they may not even recognize it because it's not officially in the 911 system. Subdividing this and plating this into separate parcels would provide that recognition through the proper form. Somebody may go to 5228 when they should be going to the rear property. That's one of the concerns we have, and that's why we think pursuing a plat approval through the plat committee, through the public hearing process, would benefit the public safety concerns that we may have if we just leave this undone, or should this variance get denied. Then we have two residential properties where the assessment, and half the community only recognizes 5228, when the other half here in Speedway and local utilities recognize 1805 and 5228. We need to bridge that gap, and we need to correct that. Next slide, please. So we have provided the written findings, both for a use and a variance. We think we've demonstrated that we would not be interest to the public health safety. Matter of fact, we think we're going to improve that by providing written documentation through the Board of Zoning Appeals and the council and the plat committee that could be a public record constructive notice given to any predecessor or future owner. We have, I don't think we would set a precedent because our property is unique for these reasons. The year it was established, prior to the ordinance, the fact that it's always had separate water and sewer ran to it, the fact that it's assigned a separate address and recognized by the town of Speedway and its utility company, the fact that it's a corner lot and both houses have direct access to Gerard, one via a public alley, one direct access on its frontage. So the hardship is, we can't physically move the house to meet the setbacks. The hardship is that this house was built prior to the ordinance being adopted. That line in the sand at 900 square feet was created after this house was built. There are countless homes in Speedway that do not meet the 900 square feet, and we think it would be unfair to require that hardship on our property if it's not required on many, many, many homes that are, that fall below that 900 square feet, and there are a number of them. And then the comprehensive plan at Zone D5, single-family residential, two lots at 5,000 square feet, we absolutely are not interfering with the implementation of the comprehensive plan. Those are your test for your variance, for your hardship. We believe we've met them. We're happy to answer questions that the council may have of us or any member of the audience, and we hope that you support your Board of Zoning Appeals and further recommend approval of what they've passed on to you. Thank you.
Now you would hear, unless you have any questions of Mr. Gilman, you would hear from the staff?
We'll have a chance to ask questions of both?
Yes, you'll have questions.
You have, you can ask Mr. Gilman now or during rebuttal, either one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mitch Rector from the Etika Group. We are at 8720 Castle Creek Parkway, Suite 400, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46250. So I was asked to put together a report that would identify the items in the zoning ordinances that would be broken during this lot split, and I've got a list of them, I believe was sent out to all of you. So just a couple quick definitions that Mr. Gilman also went through. D5 is intended for medium and large lot housing formats, primarily detached housing, but may incorporate small-scale multi-unit buildings in this type of location. Obviously, both of these, if they are housing, they would meet the D5. Setbacks. So in the zoning ordinance manual, a setback is the minimum horizontal distance from a property line, curb, center of street, body of water, or structure that a building is prohibited. And this is important because the entire point of setbacks is to prevent the spread of house fires or house damage during, say, a tornado. They let in airflow and natural lighting, and they also let people work around the house to get access to the utilities. So with that covered, as Mr. Gilman had said, the rear setback requirement for a D5 house is 25 feet, and from the drawings that he's provided, the rear setback, as it exists for the smaller residents at 1805 Gerard, is only seven feet. It is true that since these residences existed prior to 1964, that this could have been grandfathered in, but I believe that by separating these residences, you are now identifying these as two different, two distinct properties. And as such, some attention should be paid to how the setbacks are set up for each of the two properties. As he also said, the primary dwelling square footage requirement in a D5 area is 900 square feet. Again, neither of the dwellings are 900 square feet presently, since they have been grandfathered in from before this ordinance had been put together, but if it is going to be recognized that what was originally grandfathered in is now being separated into two separate lots, both of them would be underneath 900 square feet. One of them is, the 1805 residence would be 543 square feet, and the Crawfordsville residence is... I don't believe I have the note right here, but... 738. Thank you. There's also a bit of a question about how off-street parking would be affected. The Crawfordsville residence, as it stands now, does have a gravel driveway coming off of the Gerard Street. Based on the Indianapolis driveway permit manual, standard drawing, D-R-I-V-610, it does call out that driveways in Indianapolis are made out of six inches of concrete rather than gravel. Again, this gravel driveway could have existed before this ordinance had been put together, but if you're now going to split this property, what was originally the off-street parking at the Gerard location behind the house, which was a garage or resembles a garage, would have met that off-street parking requirement of one per unit. By separating them now, you're now, again, identifying a gravel driveway coming off of Gerard into the Crawfordsville address as an off-street parking, and it's not the six inches of concrete that is currently in the standard, so. Based on those, it's my recommendation to deny this variance, both variances, I should say.
You would also have an opportunity to ask any questions of the staff or the material contained in this report? If you have any? If not, then we could move on to remonstrators, if there are any. Anybody? Any remonstration or other comments from town?
Good evening, all. John Merritt, Building Commissioner of the town of Speedway. The main issue with this variance is the structure in the rear is an accessory structure or was an accessory structure to the main structure. If you look about it, even if it was a two-family house grandfathered back then, they could have added the square footage to that, and that would have met the minimum 10,000 square foot of a two-family property rather than one. And generally, if you have a two-family property, you do not split that, you do not separate that, or whatever the case is. It's considered, that's the reason why the code book talks about a one- and two-family property. That book goes by that, okay? The other big concern we had is, in the packet, it shows an actual approach on one side of the rear structure, and I highlighted out to where that was. And they had discussed that the rear building was on a crawl space, was a portion of it on a crawl space and a portion of it a garage, that quite often has happened in areas that had a rear area that quite often a family member would occupy. The town is not questioning whether or not it could be an occupied structure, but whether or not it should be a primary structure. The other portion is, is nobody had brought any information to how the inside of this structure has been built. Is it a one-bedroom? Does it have a full kitchen? Does it have a half kitchen? None of that information has been brought forth in this variance, and there are some very minimum requirements that you have to have for a residence in the way of considering it a main structure or a residence versus an accessory structure. You could rent out a unit that would have less of a kitchen than you would actually have a main structure, okay? So the main point that the town is making is that if it's on a crawl space, how much of it's on a crawl space? What is the design of the inside of it? And probably the main thing, our contention is, my records show that it was built in the 1925. They did state this evening that it was built before 64, and it was built as an accessory structure. And that's all they had for this evening.
Do you have any questions for John?
I do. When you say accessory structure, are you talking about a garage, or what?
Yes, that's generally it. But in an actual plot plan of residence, a lot, there is always a primary structure... always a primary structure, then a garage would be an accessory structure, a mini barn would be an accessory structure. Any other structure that is tied to the main residential structure, the Marion County ordinance will not let you, on an empty lot, build a garage without a main structure. You have to have a main structure. You cannot build an accessory structure on an empty lot. It has to have the primary structure.
I can ask this question of either, so, but I heard it was a garage at one point, which means you pull a car into, but I also heard it has a crawl space. So I'm confused.
And so that's what my question was. It appears as though a portion of the house had a approach that had a garage of it, and they stated this evening, and we do have some pictures that do show the foundation, and a portion of it, this right here, could be the crawl space portion of it. It does look like there's some pretty big gaps in it. If we could go to the next picture, this is the portion of it that shows that the actual, it looks like it's sitting on one block and sitting on possibly either a slab or a foundation. That's the other thing that is in question. It has not been determined that this house has a foundation underneath it. Quite often, the accessory structures back then did not. They would put a slab down and then either put a crawl space on top of it or not. I'm not saying it definitely does not have it, but that is a very large portion because many people have purchased a main residence that did not have a foundation without an inspection, and they could not sell a main, primary house because it did not have a foundation underneath it.
Any other questions from Mr. Merritt?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Gilman, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
I was cautious not to introduce new evidence that wasn't presented to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I have heard some kind of new evidence tonight, but I guess what's fair is fair. But I do have, for your information, I got handouts. This is the property card from the assessor's office. I'd like you to look at the areas that I have circled. One, it's being assessed as a single-family dwelling. Two, its basement is on a full crawl space. Three, it's got a total of four rooms and one bedroom, central air, plumbing, full bath, kitchen, sink, water heater, all the fixtures. It's being assessed as a dwelling. Mr. Merritt is correct. They do have it year constructed, 1925. Again, I was going by the waterworks records, but they also are assessing this at $74,500. Not many garages or converted garage apartments assess for $75,000 bucks. My evidence proves that the assessor recognizes this as a single-family dwelling. It's on a full crawl space, as evident by the photographs. Just because the concrete goes up to the front of the building, a lot of them had concrete drives, just didn't have the garage. But there is an assumption that, well, no, that had to go into the building, there's not enough room. That concrete paved area, I think, is not nearly wide enough to fit a vehicle inside that structure. I do believe, though, there was a concrete apron poured up to the structure just to have some hard surface parking area. So those are the things that I just wanted to make sure that were clear. These are factual. We're not assuming anything. As far as the comment, a duplex is two units. Ownership, whether it's a rental or a duplex that is owned by separate entities, is not and does not impact the definition of what is a duplex, the ownership or form of ownership. So with that information, again, most, all this information was identical that was presented to your Board of Zoning Appeals. I just wanted to clarify some of the things that are of record with the assessor's office, how they're actually taxing this property, how subdividing the property will not diminish the value of homes in this area because they're not going to change, as they are today. The form of ownership could change, but I don't think that would impact the value in this area. The immediate adjacent property owner to the north has submitted an affidavit in support of this variance and has also acknowledged that this house has always been there for over 40 years, that they've lived there. They weren't remonstrating at the BZA hearing. We had no remonstrators in the neighborhood, except for the staff, Mr. Merritt. So I felt that if they were concerned about their property values, they would have been at the BZA hearing. We're asking that you do recognize and acknowledge 5228 Crawfordsville, 1805 Gerard, is very unique. It's very different. It's got a lot of history, a lot of documentary evidence that we presented, so that you would not be setting a precedent, allowing people just to subdivide their properties and have two houses on one lot. This instance, this circumstance is unique, and we hope that you agree with us. And again, I'd be happy to answer questions that any board member or town council member has.
Any questions for Mr. Gilman?
So you, the inside, you're saying is four rooms, correct?
There's four rooms. There's a living room, a kitchen, bathroom, and a bedroom. Small, but it's, yeah, it's...
And you mentioned when we started that there was an agreement with the BZA about a driveway? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, what the BZA had asked, and I think the staff brought this up in their staff report, that the drive, the gravel drive, it's in one of my overheads, the gravel drive to 5228, sort of is this coming off Gerard, and there's really no designated parking areas where I could come off Gerard, pour on the gravel drive, turn around, and pull back out on Gerard. They've just driven up near the back of the house to go into the 5228 residence. What we agreed with the board, because staff raised it as a concern, is we would make sure that that house had its own defined off-street parking in the 1805 Gerard standalone. It's got concrete surface parking off the alley.
Is that only for one car for the back?
No, it's 19. You could probably, you could easily fit a couple cars there safely.
Which one?
Off of 1805. Would you agree, a couple cars on that concrete? Yeah.
Both? Okay. Did we have a picture of that? I thought we did. I know we had it, I can't find it. So the drive in front is the length of the house? Is that correct? Am I saying that? I'm looking at this, sorry, I'm looking at this picture. This picture?
It's not the full length, no.
No, but there's enough room for...
Side by side.
Enough room for a car next to that one, is what you're saying?
Dave, keep going.
And I just wanted to make just a closing comment about my clients. They're both Speedway High School alumni. They've hired me, and I've worked with them on almost half a dozen projects here in Speedway. They love your community. They take really good care of their properties, and this will be no different.
Do you want to notice here on the property record, it indicates that there is no attic?
There is an attic. Agreed?
Is that a cathedral ceiling or...
It is.
All the way through?
Yes. Yes, there is, and I'm not sure why that was on there, but I noticed that too as well.
That's an interesting value, too.
Thank you.
So am I correct in saying this owner for this is the same as the one in the front now? Is that correct?
That's how it is currently, yes. My two clients.
Okay. And by, if we were to approve this for you, you're saying that that could change?
That could change. We have a prospective buyer here in the audience that would like to purchase that smaller home for his daughter. He also is a Speedway resident. His business is literally across the street from this property, and that's something that he'd like to pursue.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gilman.
Thank you.
Rebuttal, any? Have an opportunity for five minutes? No? Okay.
I just have one question. You said it had central air conditioning? Oh, window. So once again, that property record card that you guys have read, does...
Out of no fault of anybody in this room, that property record card is not always very accurate. It did not say anything about the attic. I think he had stated it had central air conditioning, so we just need to keep that in mind. Because Indianapolis has so many of them, they just go by what information they are submitted, and sometimes it's accurate and sometimes it's not. It has nothing to do with anybody in the room.
John, real quick, John, is this ever a house that you've had the opportunity to go inside and inspect for?
I have not. No, I have not.
Where was the encroachment that you had mentioned? Did you say there was an encroachment on the back?
The approach is what I was talking about.
Oh, the approach, yes.
And there is, if they say that there is a full crawl space, you know, obviously, I'm going to believe them. It just, quite often, we have seen mixed-use structures. A portion of it's a slab and a portion of it is, yeah. And the only thing I brought up, and I only brought up some of the foundation issues because they had stated this time and not last time that it was a crawl space, so I went ahead and approached some of that. And the reason why I didn't hear them discuss whether or not it had a foundation or not, and obviously, that's an important item as well.
So someone brought up the fact of the address being a possibility of an issue with public safety?
Yeah. Once again, he had brought up that because it is not a problem to public safety, because, trust me, if our water department and the clerk's office has 1805, it is in our system exactly as that. So if there is a run at that right now, and so it's no benefit one way or the other, our police and fire would go to that if they got that address.
Because it's not really on, I mean...
No, it's on an alley.
1805, you're, yeah, it's on the alleyway.
That is correct. It is, yes.
But we've had service to it since?
We have had service to it for quite a long time. We do not know exactly how long it's been separated. Once again, if they say they have information that it's been separated since 64, we don't have anything that disagrees with that. The property record cards say that's what it is, and that's what we're going to leave to that. It does have, it is always, but once again, a house that is a double has a separate service for the unit on the left side and the unit on the right side.
But they're usually in the same lot, so there'd be no reason to split a lot.
That is exactly right.
If it were a double or a duplex.
Thank you, John.
So the driveway for 5228, the gravel that is, it sounded like there's going to be additional gravel put there? How wide, approximately how wide will it be? I'm looking at the picture you provided, and the car that's kind of backed up to the house there is past the front of the house. Is it, well, side of the house, as it relates to Gerard? We're talking about 5228. What are the plans for that driveway?
Yeah, I think we would go ahead and maintain about a 12-foot-wide drive, and then when you get up closer to the rear of the house, then make a sort of a L-shaped for additional parking, so you could pull off the 12-foot drive and then turn around and drive back out.
Like a hammerhead is what we would normally call that. Thank you. The other question is, 1805, there's no sidewalk from Gerard to the residence. It's all happening on the alley. So if someone is trying to walk to that home, they either have to walk across the yard, they have to walk up the alley, which really doesn't leave room for pedestrians if there's a vehicle coming. Are there any plans to put sidewalk?
To Gerard?
From, yes, from Gerard to 1805.
We don't have any plans, but when you go through the plot process, that is a plot requirement that they need to consider.
Remind me again, why will you go through the plot process?
To subdivide the property so that we would have...
Could sell it off if you want to.
Yeah.
And Marion County still does that process, I believe, at this time. We don't do that.
Split of a...
We don't split property or...
Yeah, we'd have to have a survey done and stuff.
Plot committee.
Yeah.
I don't know what, this is the first time we've had a hearing since we went, we took over this portion of the zoning, so I apologize for not necessarily understanding the rules. Can we ask for something to be done? Would the owners be open or willing to put a sidewalk from Gerard to the structure? I'm talking about 15, or 1805.
Yes. Because I am. Can I come up there? Please tell me if you're affirmative or penalty perjury that your testimony and evidence will be the truth.
I do. My name is Dean Ergot. I reside at 7801 West Mooresville Road in Camby. I own the property with Mr. Nickel. Sidewalks are a big issue. The reason I say that is they become very cost-restraining whenever you try to establish it, because Marion County will add all kinds of restrictions to get a sidewalk that they approve specific width, depth, and heights. I can give you an example. I have a parcel in Camby. We originally were going to put in a quarter-mile of a sidewalk. We had a bid estimate of $66,000 originally. We took it to Marion County to get it approved, and that's a quarter-mile, $66,000 sidewalk, ended up being $187,000, and we physically could not appropriate those funds. So I don't want to commit to you guys to say I would put a sidewalk in, or we would, because I think the cost would be exorbitant just to put in a, it's probably an 80-foot sidewalk, because of the requirements of the city or town. So if we can make some sort of agreement to something less than city code, which doesn't make sense to me, I'd be willing to do that, but that's a big step. Any other questions you might have?
Can I clarify your ask? Please. You're only asking for a sidewalk from the structure to Gerard, not all the way along Gerard, correct?
Yeah, that's what I was asking about. Certainly...
Do you understand that as well?
Structure from Gerard's still 70-some feet, right?
But it's private. It would be a private walk.
It should be, yeah, as long as Marion County doesn't get involved, it should be private. But again, I don't want to, the last one was three times our original estimate when we finally got that.
So I think the consideration is a walk away from Gerard to the structure, since it's on private property, we could figure out whether it'd be decorative stepping stones or something like that. I think what my client was concerned about is, you're not asking for a city-standard five-foot-wide, four-inch hole-depth ADA-compliant sidewalk from the front of the house to Gerard.
Right, I wasn't asking for that.
You just want some type of placeholder to show that this, if I'm stopping on Gerard for whatever service Amazon, I can go to Gerard, walk to the house as opposed to blocking the alley or something like that.
Yeah, just, and I recognize that the towns are... to the alley and beyond. I think there probably is, once we get past the alley to the north, you get past that alley. But I was strictly asking about from Gerard to the home, towards the front door, which is actually parallel to the alley, is what I was asking about.
Any other questions? Hearing on, Bob?
Yes, so at this point, if you would each just mark your ballots, as a reminder, again, there are two. The first is the development standards variance, and the second is the use variance. To legally establish two dwellings on a single lot, and the development standard variance is the seven-foot setback in a 543-square-foot floor area on the 1805 Gerard property. Please, Dale, would you be so kind as to...
Sure, collect them.
Collect and ballots, I can separate them out.
Please do. And please make sure you sign those. Somebody didn't sign. Somebody did not sign.
Everybody, who did not sign theirs?
Somebody didn't sign. Oh, okay. Would you be so kind?
Thanks, Grant.
We probably need to split between which is which, right?
So they vote the same votes for...
Yeah. Did all of them say that? But everybody voted the same way on each one, right?
Yeah, everybody voted consistently on everyone, so.
Okay, so we've got five ballots. And we have got two ballots for and three ballots against. So both variances are denied.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I would, that's the only matter on the agenda for the appeal hearing, so I would recommend that you adjourn this special meeting.
It's 6:54. This meeting is adjourned.